Another visual, so just another material that teachers can use to instruct and to make content relevant. Dice, I use dice all the time. And I take fluency activities that Engage New York gives us, and then I put my own spin on it. We did it this way yesterday, now we're gonna do it again today with dice. And so just another thing teachers can do to be creative. Like I said, I've got stuff for every lesson, but teaching two-dimensional, three-dimensional shapes, like real-world ice cubes, a toolbox, a can, a refrigerator, a cookie, I mean, real-life relevant things. And my kids love math, and I love it too, so just some visuals for you guys to see.
And what I wanted to share was when I first started Engage New York, I think we all shared it, there was lots of frustrations. It was really hard for me in teaching 11 years, and I saw a script, and it made me fit into a box, and I don't fit into a box very well as a teacher. And so I wanted to use, like she said, my creativity, I want to do what I know works. And I feel like the way we teach reading in Garden City is amazing, and it really works, and we're successful. And so I kinda wanted to mimic that in my math, because that's what I know works. And so the differentiation is really important to me, because I incorporate that in my Engage New York lessons. So I teach my whole group lesson, but then we also go into centers like we do in reading. And in those centers, the just centers are differentiated. So I'm meeting the needs of all my students, high, medium, low, all of their needs. As well as, another thing about differentiation that's important to me is, like Dee was saying, the means of engagement. One thing I love about Engage New York is it teaches you lots of different strategies, and the students are able to pick the strategy that works best for them. As I say, go-to, your go-to strategy. And we also do a lot of anchor charts, there's a bunch of them here, but I'll just show you one. We go through all the strategies that Engage New York teaches us, and some of them are new. Like she said, number bond, I was like, what is a number bond? And now I love number bonds, because that helps them understand how to solve a problem. It's so cool. And then we also do a new one called Tape Diagram, and I always tell my kids, you know, as I was little, I had never heard of anything like that before. But it's another cool strategy that's new, new for us, new for our students. But what I love is that it also incorporates all of the strategies that I learned when I was little. And so my students are able to cipher through what works best for them, taking the old and the new, and giving what works best for them. And I also just really appreciate the flexibility that the district has given me in using Engage New York, because in the beginning, it wasn't working for me, and with the modifications and the flexibility, my kids have been very successful this year, and they are really ready for second grade, and I'm really proud of them. And like Megan said, they love math, and it's fun, and it makes them feel smart. Allowing them to use different strategies makes them feel successful, no matter where they come from or where they start.
And another thing we talked about in our meeting, I teach first grade and a fifth-grade teacher, we were talking about how, at both grade levels, we have pulled out, the questions the students are asking, the connections that they're making, we're pulling out, we're pulling up the internet and Googling something to answer their question that Engage New York has led us to. It's so fun when they ask a question, I don't know the answer. So I'm like, okay, so we pull out the phone, and we ask Google the answer, and the room is silent. Like, it's amazing. And then they hear it. And it's just a celebration. It's, I mean, we just, we're pulling in all kinds of things. And the questions, the problems, the things that we're doing, Engage New York are leading to the instruction and the experiences that we're having in our classroom.
I'm Michelle Lawd, I teach fifth-grade math at Brindis-Sits. And to tie into that, at the upper level, real-world relevancy, I have used my son's career as an example almost daily with the application problems, because he is a commodity trader, and he's a product of USD 457, and I'm very proud of him. But for those of you who know him, but anyway, it's really cool, because last fall, we had an application problem in which it had to do with the price of a barrel of oil. And at the time, Engage New York applied the price at the time of the publication of the application problem. So then I talked about how that affects your prices at the gas pump, and they were like, oh, okay. And the highs and the lows of all that. And so they wanted to know what the price of oil was currently. So at that point in time, they were headed to lunch in their encore, so I told them that I would get with my son on the phone and find out what today's price was, and see if we could figure this out when they came back. So they went to lunch, and went to encore, and I got on the phone with him during lunch break, and he said, sure, give me a time, and I'll make this happen. So they came back, and we got all settled, and he, in the meantime, had sent me an email with a chart of, in the moment, what's going on globally. And so then we FaceTimed him, and he gave him a little talk on price of oil, and what's happening in the world, and how it's affecting what's going on. And then he said, and as of, and he just took it really seriously, as of, you know, 11:53 today, the price of oil is. So then they all wrote it down, they had their dry erase boards, and wrote it down. And so he said, now, you can calculate, plug that into your problem, compare it to the year 2011, I think is what Engage New York gave us, and find out what's different. And then your teacher's going to show you historically what the price of oil is. I've sent an email her with the chart. So that just led to some really in-depth discussions, and, oh, my parents complained about the price of gas. And, you know, it's just, it's relevant, it's real-world, they're asking questions about, you know, his job, and what he does, and buying and selling, and, you know, it's, we're not just Garden City, Kansas. We're global, and everything that's going on in the world affects you, so you need to understand how this all works. And then most recently, so they're always asking questions, anytime it comes up, well, can we find out, you know, what grain price is today? Because the question was about flour, or whatever. So it's coming up frequently. So to me, I think it's very real-world, and applicable, and very relevant. Most recently, historically, the price for an ounce of gold was September 23rd, 2013, I think, was an all-time high. So they wanted to know, again, what is the price today? So same thing, we found out, and let us know. And he also included information on silver, so we could compare the difference. And that led to, well, why is there a difference? And how is it measured, you know? So they're just excited about those kinds of things, which then led to, well, how money is made? And a machinist, and, well, what are their wages? So they're thinking about jobs and careers, and it's just really, I see a lot of enthusiasm with this. And it's real-world, it's relevant, it gets them to think about the skills they need for their future. And, you know, if someone from our school system's doing this, then I can too. And, I mean, they're just really excited. They're always asking me when we can talk to him again about what's going on, you know? So then I'm trying to find, you know, when it's mentioned in the news or the newspaper, hey, guys, this is happening, this is real-world, it's today, it's 21st century, and you need to understand, you know this stuff, so that you can be informed. So that's my spill on real-world, but they're very enthusiastic about it, they love it. Just to add to that, Friday, Rod and I ran into a couple of teachers from another school that were pretty dissatisfied with Engage New York. And I don't think they realized that they could do these kinds of things. I think they thought fidelity meant, you know, stay in the box. And so part of our, part of our time that we spent last week was developing the list of plans for professional development, so that we're gonna make sure that teachers know they can get out of the box a little bit in the fall. That's part of our plan for next year.
Can I add something to that? I know we talked about it the other night, like about math coaches. I came from Florence Wilson, and we did, I do not like going to Florence. We did not have a math coach. And I know, I've been teaching 12 years, and so I had all of these things in my tool belt, and thought, when I got, or when we first introduced Engage New York, I was frustrated. I was so upset, because I thought, what are they doing? That this just took everything? Because the way I was introduced to it, it was basically a script, and I was very frustrated. And basically, my whole point to this is, I am super excited that there will be math coaches in every building, because yes, I understand that they don't, they're not forming the way you're teaching. I do feel like we're all gonna be on the same page. And I think those meetings, and having someone there that you can bounce ideas off, and giving us a little bit more, not necessarily the foundation part, but guide us through that, I think will be so beneficial, because I, at my building, have not had that. So I am super excited, super, super excited. So just glad I'd add that. So thank you for the math coaches.
Do you have any questions about differentiation or?
I just have to say, I'm pretty excited about this. I'm super excited. That's the feedback we were getting, both from, you know, from the buildings as well as at home, was the rigidity of the effort, and the newness of it, and the inability to fill in the gaps by the parents to help the child learn, to go back to school the next day for those that had homework, and have it done. And so it sounded like we've overcome an awful lot of that.
Well, we're working on it.
A lot of these topics, I don't know if you clarified it, we picked these topics from teacher surveys, parent surveys, our focus groups, so all of these were common themes that were brought up with concerns. So we tried to address concerns that were repeated, and through these modifications, that's where we got the different topics.
Jeanne, a question. In the, in this portion of it, where is the practice or the repetition for those students that need multiple opportunities to learn it? Is that all gonna be in the homework part?
There's practice built in to, there's a fluency component, and so there's practice, I think, almost daily with that as far as fluency goes. And then another, and they'll talk about that, address that a little bit, but also there's problem sets every day for practice.
But repetition is part of the curriculum?
Yep. And oftentimes, the application problems will refer back to the earlier, even an earlier grade level. This is something they learned in fourth grade, or whatever, so that the application problem has a lot of that repetition.
And then that was something that was added, right? That wasn't part of the original?
The application problems are within the curriculum. It's one of the components that goes fluency.
Well, that's one of the things that we are hearing, is there's not enough, and maybe it's compared to the way the parents were taught, but, you know, those fast facts, and those memorizations, and speed drills.
And we have a little skill of fluency that's coming up.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And I know within, if they do their whole group instruction, and they go to small group instruction, if they're needing more of that just basic fluency, that's easy for them to build in. If they've used all of the Engage New York problems included in the lesson, they're able to pull in, as long as it goes with the objective and the College of Career Standards, other things for extra practice.
And with the concept development, I see from lesson to lesson, there are several lessons in a row on the same concept, teaching the same topic, and maybe just putting a little different spin on it. But you're teaching the same concept repeatedly from day to day, for maybe three or four lessons, and then it's tied back when it, the next push is, it's tied back in there. So I feel like there's lots of repetition in our lessons, and for students who miss school, you know, I feel like it's fairly easy for them to catch up.
I think Jeanne has a follow-up.
So what you're seeing is there's already repetition in the beginning of this past year. But we're hearing some, that there isn't sufficient repetition, so that's what it's mine. And it's about, I do want to point out, though, I don't have a sense of whether you're all elementary representatives, or whether there are differences from the middle schools.
The middle school and high school were not part of that, but we're.
Rebecca, what's your second area representation as of right now? But we have not done our modifications yet, but I was part of the K-6 modifications, which is what they're presenting, and I will be part of the modifications getting completed and worked on over the next week or so, at the seventh through ninth grade level.
But you're asking for consideration for that whole grade, K-8, but you're really only talking about more early elementary tonight, is that right?
The framework that they're describing will be very similar to what happens at the secondary level, I believe, Rebecca.
And I can address some of that, too, is the way that these modifications have been done, they've been done as parameters that you can fit within those. And most of the parameters will work for what the concerns were at the middle school and high school level as well. One of the concerns is fluency at the middle school, high school level, more so than at the elementary level. I think it starts right around sixth grade, that there's a problem with fluency. And we've talked about already with the K-6, which we'll get to it in fluency, we've talked about being able to add in some of those fluency pieces. And that'll be one of the things that, for seventh through ninth grade, is a few considerations as well. Some of, really mostly only things that don't fit for middle school, high school, and one of the big ones is for high school, we don't teach every day. That's one of the things with the K-6 that they're presenting, is that the math will be every day. Well, because of the high school block schedule, we don't have math every day, we're gonna have it every other day. And that's kind of hard to have that separation, but we still do the lessons in the same order as they're approached. And the being able to combine things as they are needed will help a lot, because sometimes, like they said, there's certain things that two or three lessons go hand-in-hand. But doing it with fidelity, as we've done it this year, it was one lesson per class period, and that was it. Whereas some of these, you really wanted to tie them together, or you wanted to extend it a little bit, but we didn't feel like we had that flexibility with doing it with fidelity. But that's one of those parameters that the K-6 is adding in, that I do believe the seventh through ninth will go with as well. Most of these parameters can fit seventh through ninth, just as easily.
The other issue at the middle level was time. They have 43-minute class periods, and they totally had, for math and for ELL, and for that, it has 66, 67 minutes. So that should also help address being able to have the time to address the problem.
I just think there is a huge difference between having such a change in the curriculum at lower grade levels, where they have very little math experience, to trying to have this change at these higher grade levels, where they have a great deal of experience in it under another type of curriculum. I think it's much more difficult, and I think it's probably much less successful trying to implement it wholeheartedly at those upper grade levels, because those students have not progressed along in the same path. And that really concerns me, because I, I think, you know, losing progress in math, a really critical, basic subject of those upper grade levels, where you have high school, and ACTs, and college-based.
I understand exactly your concern, and the longer you've been in the system, and if you've learned the old way, the harder it is to change. But I would point out to you, too, we heard tonight from Kenneth Henderson, and their kids going to high school, they've got everybody at grade level moving into the ninth grade. So I think it can be done, I think it requires.
We've seen huge gains at both middle schools and high school this year, actually.
And I will say also that, at the intermediate center at Brindis-Sits, the sixth-grade curriculum is similar, well, actually, the way the commentary is set up, it goes K-5, and the way the work is set up, and then sixth through ninth. So we made that shift from this to sixth grade last year and this year. And we, in math, had a 27, almost 28% gain on our elementary, in math. And I think my, especially my sixth-grade teachers, they're the best collaborators, and they've made the best gains in the domain in math.
Do we have any data to support some of those gains, to show us what these lessons are showing, or anything?
I have data, I have data.
We don't have the assessment data, if that's what you're asking. We have screening data, and you may have some golden one.
Well, I'm just, as a fifth-grade teacher, I'm excited about next year, getting the fourth graders that have had this for a year, and we're going to be able to pick up and go, I hope, I feel, a lot faster, and the momentum will just keep going.
I know, I was concerned as a parent as well, because I have a seventh-grade son, who, this was, he was a part of the pilot last year, and so this year was his first year of exposure to Engage New York at all. And he's done phenomenal, he's not had a problem at all. It used to be that he struggled with math, but he likes, for him at least, it's been seeing the real-world applications and seeing how it relates, which is a much more direct correlation with the Engage New York than with a standard text. There's a lot more of that real-world relevancy. It makes sense, it clicks. I've not had the homework come home that was like, oh my gosh, I don't know how to do it. I think I had one day of tears. And that was a, I showed him one other way, and it was fine. But one day of tears for a math curriculum in general, I don't think is all that bad, because regardless if you go to Engage New York or a textbook modification, you're, there's always gonna be that time where you have to readjust. But as far as a parent and a teacher, I haven't seen any huge issues that I would have necessarily expected. I do see more gaps at the high school level than I would with a regular textbook. The gaps are definitely there. But we are definitely going to address those, and have that built into the modifications to address the gaps.
I think that's an important point, too, that what we're looking at here is a change in the standards. So whatever program or news is going to be a pretty significant change in the future.
Can I answer your question?
Well, it just really concerns me of the higher, higher grade levels, the population, because I think it is very successful for some students, but I just don't think it's successful for others. So, and I think there's a number of others where it's terrible. And I'm concerned about relying on the parents to sort of, to lend that additional part to help their students. I think in the past, our parents have been able to help, especially in math, even if they couldn't do some of the other areas as much. But math is sort of not a language issue so much, so I think that was easier at that time. But now, I think with this, it's more difficult for them, and so for us to rely on that parent help.
Those are more the standards that we're expecting our students to learn, even at a higher grade level. Like Dr. Dennis just said, we introduced those standards a couple of years ago, and they're expected to know those things regardless what program we go to.
That's kind of.
So I think that's, I think that's.
I also think the ACT, the SAT, and per-state assessment will reflect more of this than the old way.
Well, I think it's gonna creep up, and the successes will start at the earlier elementary, and then they'll go. But I'm just really concerned about those students that are currently in middle and high school, and basically having to totally change their way of.
I know as a third-grade teacher, we, there were gaps in what the students learned even last year, even with this program, and those were some of the things in the beginning that I had to go back and reteach them. Now, did I spend six months on them? No, but we talked, like, I went through all of those with them, and I know it's much more difficult at the high school level, because it is so much more intense. They still had that higher-level thinking going on there, we just had to back up a little bit, because what we were teaching last year was different than this year. So I think that that's, I mean, that's something that we would all have to do, I think we do that every single year. And even as a high school teacher, I would assume that they would have to do the same, because all of those kids aren't learning the same way.
For continuing the program.
What percentage of the teachers that were on the committee are represented here? Eighty percent, ninety percent?
Most of these teachers were part of the focus groups. They maybe weren't on the big now committee that started with adoption, that recognized the adoption. Were any of you on that group? I think that most of them.
I just want to make sure we're getting a fair representation, because it seems like you guys are unanimous, this is great.
We did ask for other people to come, and we did ask that there was, if they had the same thing as me, maybe they had as well, but that didn't work out for them.
Okay.
We weren't, we didn't leave anybody out, or purposely picked people that were in favor. We actually didn't even have a plan for that.
Okay, all right.
For yours. I think I addressed this somewhat already, just wanted to begin. The complex reading level, that was one of the concerns, and came up through our themes of things. But that's what I was talking about, differentiating the problems, not only making them real-world, but changing the vocabulary in them to make them understandable. The undergrades, they can have them read to them if they need be, you can change names, you can change the numbers to make it easier or harder. You just want to keep your objective the same. And then vocabulary, or variety, yeah, vocabulary, I think Randy showed you some things that she did. There's a whole thing of things you can do for vocabulary that most teachers aren't familiar with, or train those for ELL kids, so those are all the same, they're still good teaching practices, and they work for this as well, wood walls, anchor charts, sentence stems, pre-teaching the words, showing pictures, visual models. I think I did an example lesson in the third-grade classroom, and they had, we're talking about chest of drawers or something like that, I don't know that. So I just brought in some drawers and things from my, you know, just things like that, very easy to do, but just some visuals for students to know vocabulary. And just on another note, I have to say, when I've been doing walkthroughs in different classrooms, the vocabulary I'm hearing is amazing, that the kids are talking, they're talking about efficient strategies in third grade. I think my strategy is efficient because, and I'll go on, and just the words they're using, I wouldn't have thought were appropriate sometimes, but they are using them correctly, so.
Well, I would like to interject on the vocabulary, too. You're talking about the, Nico was talking about the tricks and all that. You know, Engage New York is using the correct math vocabulary, which helps them develop a deeper understanding of what's going on. Because before, I would have fourth graders come, you know, and we'd be doing. Yeah.
Usually dark chocolate.
Yeah, to multiply multiple digits, you know, turtle back, and I'm like, what? Are you, you know, all of these things, this teacher does this, and this teacher does that, and this little gimmick or phrase or trick, and with this, we're using the correct mathematical vocabulary. And I think that helps develop, if you put understanding. And again, the curriculum before was, or the standards were wide, and you just skim over the top of everything, and they get a little bit of everything. Whereas the new standards, we're, it's narrower, and we're going deeper, which is going, I think, to show the juice, better mathematical understanding down the road. But it's gonna take time. And the old curriculum wasn't, the old standards aren't, weren't doing it for us. We have, we all experience it out in the general world, where you've got kids that can't make account change, or, you know, they can't get promoted, because they don't have the skills to move up.
So, my philosophy, I mean, I just think this is a great, great direction we're headed.
To kind of piggyback, to piggyback off the vocabulary. Our school has Alexia, reading grammar, grammar that they have. But as a third grade teacher, they're even going, I've got eight more units before I level up. And before, they'd be like, eight more bars. But now, they're using units, which is our fraction term, you know? Like, you're seeing it cross over to another curriculum. As a teacher, you're just like, do you get this? Like, all right, you know?
We're creating problem solvers with this and, and that's something that I haven't seen before. You know, they are problem solving. We're creating deeper thinkers and that's what we want because these kids are going out into a world and they need to know how to solve. And yes, it's difficult right now and we have gaps to fill, but this is life and this is what they're going to. And I think we need to continue on this path.
And I would encourage, I mean, I know you're all busy, but if you ever just drop in on any classroom, I know mine, like, when they start to talk, they're like, I agree with what you're saying, but, and then they have, like, we said, there's so many different strategies, just like Randy was showing. And they, they see how you're right, but they want to prove how they're right, you know? And I think that's a great debate. And my kids are in third grade.
Can you please stop that? Because that's my student problem. I don't need it anymore.
Are you open?
You'll get a summer break.
Just not to the wrong kids.
Just real quick to go off the fact that you felt like we were all unanimous up here. When Leanne or not Rodrick asked me to be a part of this, I don't think she knew if I was going to be forward or against it. I, I know she did it because I had not talked to her about it. So, I think, you know, you've heard both sides where some were really frustrated with it, but then because they taught the curriculum, they lived the curriculum, they're understanding the curriculum, they fell in love with it. And I was the same way. Ms. Galpin picked this up, we were a pilot school last year and Ms. Galpin and I are co-teachers. And she taught math, I taught reading for the children of special needs. And she picked this up last year and I looked at it and I went, whoa, that's boring to me, but I said, good luck, have fun with it. And then this year, she needed help with a couple of classes, third and fourth grade. So, I didn't have day one, two to prepare me for this. I took it home over Christmas break because I was going to start right in December. It was very easy for me to get into the realm of it. And I came right back and I went forward with my third and fourth graders. There were times that I had to look over and go, okay, Ms. Galpin, what are you doing here? Because I didn't understand. But that's where you work through it and you, you discover.
I just wanted to play representative advocate because I know that people are going to say, you know.
Yeah, I just want to play, you know, though, when Ms. Rodrick asked me to be a part of this, I, I know she did not know my feeling either way.
Okay, great.
And I love it now, but I, like you said, it was a rough start.
We heard that at almost every elementary back with me.
But I think it's a choice. I mean, with anything, like, you have to embrace it or you find a way to solve, you know, problem solve, find another route. We have another route in September and you just flat out embraced it.
And I think with the modifications, I, I believe that a lot of the teachers that were, and some of them are still frustrated with it, I do feel like they will have a line in for this program if, yeah, if the modifications are there and everyone's here to support each other. Because like Danica said, I, last week when they called, I thought, I don't know if I'm the best person to come over there and tell you. But then they started talking about the modifications and I think that that's where we need to be at. So.
And they truly came to the teachers. I mean, like, they asked us for our advice. They didn't just make all these modifications. Yeah.
Well, I think that's what's going to make the product great is because they asked the experts what they need to know to make it better. So, I, I love that piece about this. But again, so many things you're talking about are just simple resistance to change factors. Look, we went through those with iPads and, you know, and now if you take iPad away from the teacher, they probably hurt you. So, I, I totally understand that there should transition areas. We just need to make sure that we have a product that we can get behind and support. And, and it sounds like what we're hearing is that this is a supportable curriculum.
For sure. I have guessed find a curriculum that does not have holes in it.
Sure.
This one has holes, but I think with the supplements, the supplemental materials that we're providing to you this evening, we're going to make a good curriculum a great curriculum.
Well, why don't we patent the new one? And solve our funding problem.
Okay, Jean, you have a follow-up question? I do. Are the modifications that you're speaking about, the scaffolds, the workhangers, but you're telling, but, but those are things you're already doing, some of them, but that's right? So, how is that, this one to be modified for the future?
I was not doing those things. Sorry, I don't mean speaking, I kept getting further and further back. When we were, even the last three months, and they were like, well, you can have more flexibility with this. And I thought, we have two months of school left, you know? And wait a second, you've been telling me since day one, you need to be, or you know, we have to have fidelity with this program and don't shoot it, or not. There, you know, you had to stay between here and here is the way many of the teachers in my building interpreted that. And I think that that, again, is where a lot of the frustration. So, for me, like I said, going in last week and seeing some of these, or us even talking about these modifications that can be done, I know that there's going to be a buy-in for the, from the teachers because we can teach, like.
Have these been grouped into all of the teachers then?
That's the professional development part that will happen in the fall. And we didn't want to share this until we're through this. Right. We couldn't do that because you guys say, I don't think it's clear. So, we can wait until you get your support before we share all these with the teachers. And they will be tomorrow if you approve it.
Well, you guys all want a committee, so. I mean, because it seems like you guys all understand the process and are doing a great thing. But even you said, you talked to two teachers yesterday, they didn't even know they could do what Ms. Law is doing.
Well, we are, we are six math coaches.
So, six of you are math coaches?
Six of us are math coaches.
And the rest are?
Teachers that came in Wednesday, Wednesday after school for almost an hour and a half and gave them the modifications that we had made, this document. They went through it, we discussed it, they looked at the PowerPoint, they told us things that they were concerned about and then we went back on Thursday and made the change. But yes, I, I.
Because isn't there another committee that was of coaches and parents and?
Yes.
There was that committee. That, that committee made the initial recommendation to move forward. The six coaches. And based on that recommendation, rather than pull everybody in at this time of year, the coaches were asked, develop the modifications and then we'll bring some other teachers in to bounce them off of and get feedback from. So, that's, that's this group of people right here.
And Tim, Kayla was part of, Kayla was part of that large committee and really it was her recommendation that the coaches get together and put, put this together and then show it to them because they said, we don't have the 40 hours to spend on this. You put it together, we trust you and then we'll look at it.
But it seems like some teachers have been doing this all year. Is that right?
But, and I'm going to speak on that too. I came from a school, like, charity, we didn't have math coaches. So, you guys hired us as professionals and I did what I thought was best for my kids. And so, yeah, some of us probably have been implementing these strategies, not knowing any different. Nobody's there to tell me any different, but I did what my kids needed.
Well, and I, I came from a building without a math, math coach too, but I was supported by my administrator. I knew I was supported by all of you because I had spoke to you before. And I wasn't supplementing the curriculum, I was just supporting the curriculum.
Can you pass that piece up?
Yeah. Would you like, I'll give you the.
I'll take anything. Let's get back on track. I am so sorry, these questions are awesome.
To answer Jean's question though, the difference is, you've heard lots of people trying different things, the difference now is the professional development.
Right.
To make sure that everybody understands that there is more flexibility and that there is more opportunity to make it your own.
Let's go ahead. We will all be quiet and hear your presentation.